One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think I'll do this proclamation first. Can all find seats back there, I hope?
You're stuck, Frank. You're gonna have to sit up front.
Item number two on our agenda tonight is a proclamation proclaiming May 9th to 15th, 1999, as Law Enforcement Week, and Saturday, May 15th, 1999, as Law Enforcement Memorial Day. And in keeping with that, we do have a proclamation here, and I'll read it to you. Proclamation, whereas, on October 1st, 1962, the 87th Congress of the United States of America, by joint resolution, declared May 15th as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 15th as Law Enforcement Week, and whereas, said joint resolution was signed by our 35th President of the United States, John F. Kennedy, and whereas, in 1998, Oregon City Police Officers responded to 14,516 public safety services from the citizen-- citizens of Oregon City. I was amazed by the number. And whereas, the city of Oregon City is proud to honor our police officers who, on a daily basis, place their own safety and well-being in jeopardy, protecting our community. And whereas, the city of Oregon City joins the rest of the nation in commemorating the memories of more than 14,000 deceased officers, of which 148 are from Oregon, who have given their lives in performance of their duties while protecting their citizens. And whereas, this is in remembrance of Officer George J. Hanlon of the Oregon City Police Department, who made the ultimate sacrifice of his life on April 23rd, 1906, while fulfilling his duty to protect our city. Now, therefore, I, John F. Williams, Jr., Mayor of Oregon City, Oregon, do hereby proclaim May 9th through 15th, 1999, as Law Enforcement Week, and do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 15th, 1999, as Law Enforcement Memorial Day. In Oregon City, we urge all citizens to salute the men and women of our police department. I've set my hand to this, and I'd like to ask Bob Downey and Lieutenant Hurus, who would you like to come up, please, and I'd present this to you for a couple of our finest find. I'll just reach over the top if you don't mind. Officer Downey, Sergeant-- I mean Detective Downey, too, is it not?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for your service, and I hope you'll give our congratulations to the other members of the police force. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thanks very much. We do have a bit of business that's not on the agenda, and that's an agreement for a city manager pro temp services. A gentleman is here, Chris Jordan, and I think the other members of the commission have seen the agreement. What I need is a motion to give me permission to go ahead and sign the agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the agreement and give you permission to sign.
Second. Roll call? Or discussion? I'm sorry, discussion. I'm sorry. I'm getting eager here. Discussion, yes, please.
Was it the intent of the agreement to have the compensation be consistent with the resigned city manager's compensation?
No, that was not--
Okay.
I mean, there was not the intent to be consistent with it, no. It wasn't-- it was not a matter-- we didn't take one and compare it with the other, no. It was a matter of rewarding Mr. Jordan, but we thought he was worth.
Thank you.
I.
Mr. Neely.
I.
Mr. Alec.
I.
Mr. Lynch.
No, based on the fact that it's more than what we were paying our existing city manager.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Jordan, Chris Jordan, who is assistant to the city manager of Lake Oswego, and he's on loan from Lake Oswego for the period of time that it takes us to find a new city manager. We're bound by the charter to do that in 120 days, and we'll start on that immediately.
I'd just like to welcome Chris to the family for the short time he's gonna be here and look forward to the positive steps we're gonna be able to take. Thanks for coming.
The next item is number three, Commission Report 9975, Local Law Enforcement Block Grant to Public Hearing. Lieutenant Hurus.
In front of you tonight is a public hearing for a local law enforcement block grant. Many of you have heard almost the identical presentation several times before. This is a rather unique federal block grant program that they send you a letter telling you how much money you have if you apply for it, they send you the check, and then they tell you what you need to do before you can spend it. This grant is for equipment technology, and on the staff report are the items that we wish to purchase with this grant. 12 portable police radios, two laptop computers, two desktop computers, two computer printers, and some computer and email software. Before expenditure, the grant monies can be made, it has to go to a citizens advisory group that was done the last week of April, received unanimous recommendation from that group, and it now must come for public hearing in front of the governing body.
Well, I move to approve the above listed purchases.
I'm sorry?
Well, it's a public-- That's right, I'm sorry.
You have to ask for public--
Yes, I am. I'm looking to see if there's any hands up. Any public comment on this? Pretty simple, pretty straightforward. I'm sorry. No.
Close the public hearing.
Yes, close the public hearing.
Well, now we'll go ahead and move to approve the listed purchases under Report Number 9975.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Neely and Holliday. Roll.
Mr. Neely.
I.
Mr. Alec.
I.
Mr. Lynch.
I.
Mr. Holliday.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four. We have in front of us Commission Report 9977, a proposed ordinance, Number 991007, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map and Chapter 17.06, et cetera, of Oregon City. This is a second reading and final order.
I move the second reading and final adoption of Report 99-77.
Second. Mr. Neely.
The areas that are around this particular requested area for zoning are either R8 or they were R8 PUDs. I don't think there's ever been an R6 proposed. The argument that was put forward, I think, in terms of potential PUDs was giving a-- Well, it's down.
Okay.
The light doesn't-- and it is down. I'll speak up. One of the arguments that was put forward on the using a PUD from an R8 designation was that the average lot sizes, and this is out of the first, I believe, the first planning commission presentation, where an R8, in fact, was approved at the first planning commission, was that the average lot size is 5,550 square feet, which was smaller than they had. I requested, and we received, information regarding what was, in fact, the density under an R8 PUD density at 80 percent gross density, and that produced a 50 units. Under an R6, there would have been a net density under a regular R6 of 54. So the notion that they would have to have smaller lot sizes didn't make any sense to me. If these numbers are accurate, Brian, and I assume they are, first of all, 50-- they can actually have more than 50 units in a PUD, right? That kind of specifies what--
That would meet the criteria of the--
That would meet the criteria. 50 is-- 50 units is less than 54. They would not be bound by having any lot sizes less than 6,000 square feet, as I read this. Is that correct?
That's correct, but it is up to the discretion of the planning commission to interpret that, too.
I understand that.
Okay.
But the arguments that they were putting forward before the planning commission was average density size, and my guess is that the developers were expressing their specific interest in what they wanted the size of lots. So I don't think some of the arguments were valid. We have not allowed an R8 in the areas. We have allowed PUDs. And if this motion fails, I intend to vote against it. I want to ask the city attorney a question. There were actually two planning commission decisions. The first was for an R8, and then the second was for an R6. Can we approve an R8, given that it was passed on by the planning commission at one point, and then waive-- I'll finish my whole sentence, you can say no--
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And then go ahead and waive fee for the application of a PUD under an R8?
I don't think you can consider an R8 tonight because it's only been noticed for an R6. Therefore, if you did not approve the R6, wanted to do something along the lines of an R8 and a PUD, you could instruct the staff to waive the fee and initiate the applications yourself.
Okay.
Commissioner Holliday?
No, no, I was just turning off my--
Oh, okay. Commissioner Lynch? Nope, nothing?
I left my on-bag.
Okay. Commissioner Alec, any comments to this?
If I may just add a couple things.
Yes, all right.
I want to mention that, of course, this doesn't bind anybody in terms of a PUD, but this property is adjacent to the Jesse Court purchase of the parkland. It seems like there's some excellent PUD opportunities there that would benefit the city. And this is not prejudicing anything, but the potential of parking spaces, the potential of accessways into the park and so forth, might be things that the city would benefit from in terms of having a PUD.
Any further comment?
Mr. Alec.
I.
Mr. Lynch.
I.
Mr. Holliday? Mr. Neely?
No.
Mayor Rush.
I.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, moving right along. Commission Report Number 9979, Aquatics Fee Increases. Jim, do you wish to speak to this?
I have a question.
All right. We have a schedule here, and proposes the increases and some discussion about those. Why, it's a quiet night.
It's just a question out of curiosity, has nothing to do with the fees. I noticed that you had pool rentals. I presume those pool rentals are at times when it's not open to the public, is that right?
Yeah, we tend to do those on Saturday afternoons and occasionally Friday nights.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve Report 99-79.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Lynch.
Actually, it's Resolution 9817, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Commissioner Alec. Any further discussion?
Mr. Lynch?
I.
Mr. Holliday?
A small correction. The resolution is 99-20.
Oh.
I.
Mr. Neely?
I.
Mr. Alec.
I.
Mayor Rush.
I. All right. Gee, it's only 7:16.
Thank you.
I think the next one will take some time.
I think it will, too. Very important one, too. The next item is a Commission Decision Item Number Six, Commission Report Number 99-78, Request for a Stop Work Order by Property Owners in Ainsworth Estates. And we need to get some information, I think, from the-- either for-- who wants to start?
I'll just give you the background, how the report ended up in your packet. I was approached by Ms. Warnock, is that correct? About 12 minutes before we had time to-- before the deadline to get something in the report, and I whipped something out for Gene and got it into your commission packet, they are here tonight to address you as to that issue of the stop work order.
Fine, thank you, Brian. Anything for us, Mr. Attorney, before we start the discussion?
No, you have a memorandum, which I don't know whether you've had a chance to read, dealing with this matter. How you handle this is up to you. You may wish to hear from the folks who have come here. You may want to hear from me on the legal issues. Because the city is open to some liability on this, I prepared for you a confidential memorandum. If you want to discuss it, I suggest that you do that in executive session.
I think we'll do that. I think we'll hear what the folks have to say, and then we'll adjourn. We'll go out. You guys don't have to leave.
Okay, I was gonna suggest that.
We'll go out to another room, and we'll get the legal advice, and then we'll come back in. So we-- come right up, sir, yes. We-- just to clarify for you and for the public, this is not a new problem for us. We've had this before, so we do have some background, and we know what you had said to say before, but if you have new information, we'd sure like to hear it. What's happened since then?
Well, I appreciate the fact that you're gonna allow us to speak.
Bet.
That is much, very much appreciated by all of us, and I would like to make sure that there are people that have different views. I am here as a member of a committee that we put together within the neighborhood.
I'm sorry, your name and address again?
My name is Matt Warnock, and I reside at 19131 on Lot Whitcomb Drive in Oregon City. I am here tonight as a representative of the neighborhood of Ainsworth Estates. I'm a member of a neighborhood committee that was formed in response to this issue, dealing specifically with the proposed facility from the state within our development. I cannot assume to represent all the views of the entire neighborhood, and there's others that will feel the need to address the council, and I appreciate your indulgence. I wish to provide just a brief history from the eyes of the community. In 1990, the city worried that development around the Ainsworth property would detract from its historical significance. Of the estate itself, developed guidelines for the subdivision that would allow new development to blend with the Ainsworth house. At some time, the city adopted an ordinance that provides specifically for the review of design elements of all new structures that lie within the historic district. The majority of the development of Ainsworth Estate falls within this classification. There's some discussion as to the size of the historic overlay, and I didn't know quite how to address that. Somewhere between 9.8 and 17 acres, depending upon what piece of paper you look at. At first, there was a question on the existing of the ordinance, but our attorneys confirmed its adoption in the recording by the city. When the development was approved by the city, there were CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions attached that provided requirements of builders and homeowners that would ensure the development would meet the intentions of the city, that the community be developed within the guidelines of the historic district. Based on these facts, we purchased our homes in this community. Lot 9 of Ainsworth Estate was purchased by the state of Oregon somewhere around 316 of 99 with plans submitted to the city on 4/19 for approval. Part of our initial confusion was that in a letter dated March 23rd, Paul Espy indicated in a memo to Mr. Cosgrove that the proposed structure met the historic guidelines required by the city. However, two weeks ago, Brian indicated that there was no review process required, and the state's design was not subject to review. That was quite confusing to a large number of us. As a result of a community meeting that was attended by the state, we called for the meeting, we asked the state to attend, they agreed to attend, and we had a meeting in the neighborhood with-- at the Ostrigam's house. Our committee was formed to, again, meet with the state to discuss the structural modifications that would need to be made to the structure so that it met the CCNRs and conformed with the historic review requirements as we knew them to be. Since that time, there's been a second meeting between the neighborhood committee and the state. At both meetings and in numerous conversations, it has been made clear that there were other issues, such as traffic, parking, usage, and the process of the review itself as the development went forward. Our mere agreement on the physical appearance of the structure would not constitute acceptance by the community in these issues. These were issues that the city and the state needed, we felt needed to work out and be an acceptable solution that met the standards of the community. At some point in time, it is foreseeable that we will reach an agreement on how the structure will blend into the community. This leaves those issues that I identified earlier. Specifically, has the state or the city judged the traffic impact on the community for a facility that has a minimum of nine staff members, supporting five individuals with five families? There's administrators, there's logistical support traffic, it's all located on a lot with 29 feet of street frontage. They also have weekly staff meetings at facilities like this elsewhere. Has the state or the city determined the parking requirements for this traffic? With 29 foot of frontage, there's not much room to park. Where will the state store its bus, its transport vehicle that'll be associated and assigned to this facility? Mass transit is 3/4 of a mile away, and the path between the two is Leland Road, narrow, no sidewalks, and highly traveled. We ask that these issues be resolved prior to the facility being built. The state has met with the committee again and taken suggestions on the structure back to their architect. They voluntarily agreed to stop work on the site until next Monday, our third meeting with the committee and the state. We are appreciative for this action, but the fact is, the same course of action was taken at Deer Meadows, and their structure with very little effect. Two weeks ago, when I approached the council about the project, we were unclear and basically without directions. We feared that this was a complex issue, and I believe your attorney supported that fear when he was doing this thing here, when he started asking questions. And I stand before you tonight to make clear that we, as a community, feel that we know what needs to take place to make amends for clearly made mistakes, errors, and omissions. At this time, we would ask that the city broker a meeting between the city, the state, and the community to resolve those specific issues. We feel that compromise and resolutions are the terms that we're actually looking for. We don't want to get to a situation where anybody feels the need for litigation. Up until 5:20 tonight, I was planning on being here to ask for a formal stop work order, and I'll apologize to my neighbors that thought that's exactly what we were gonna do, because when they started walking around the neighborhood with that sign, the state had not provided us a letter that said that they indeed would agree to stop work until next Monday. So if you got that letter and it scared you, I appreciate you being here, but that wasn't quite truthful. They said they faxed it to us yesterday, we never received it. So at 5:20, which surprised me that somebody was still in the state office building at that time, but yes, they found it and they got it to us. So we met with the state, they agreed to stop work as long as we continued to work on the appearance of the structure. Our fear is that there are issues other than the structure that need to be addressed, and they only agreed to stop work as long as we were talking about the structure, not on the other issues, traffic, parking, and what it's gonna do to the neighborhood. I already said the first part. I appreciate the fact that you were willing to listen to the rest of the neighbors, they have some important things to say. At this point in time, basically, as a member of the committee, we were the ones that were put on the agenda, we were the ones that asked to have the stop work order. We would not do so at this time, per the agreement that we have with the state. That does not preclude individuals from within the community asking that you do the same, nor would it, would it any way preclude you from making that decision based upon your conversation with your attorney until you get a meeting set up with the state and we come to some resolution. Thank you.
And thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, yes. Yes, please. Commissioner Lynch.
So your request is for the city to set up a meeting, to facilitate a meeting between the neighborhood and the state of Oregon?
That's correct, and to table our request for a stop work order until later. Thank you.
Commissioner Alec?
I'd like to ask, since he probably knows the answer to this and I don't, the state's involvement in this, is this-- I'm not clear whether the state is the-- is brokering this with a special program, or is the builder, or is it a business?
Yeah, what happens is, somewhere along at some point in time, and I think Shirlene can allude to the Fair Housing Act, and they talked about taking people with disabilities and placing them back out into the community. That decision was made probably, actually, it was made prior to the state making a decision as to what to do with some of their facilities, specifically, in our case, Fairview Hospital. So they're taking what they have at Fairview Hospital, and they're applying the Fair Housing Act to that, and so they've developed a program as to how they can do that. And they've had a modicum of success up until recently, as they get down to what's left and has not yet been placed out in these communities, and Shirlene can actually give you some feedback on that. The state does take, and they go out and they purchase the property, they take out a loan for the structure that's going to go on the property, if it's a new construction. Now, they have gone out and they've bought existing homes and renovated them before also, and they've used those. Then they turn around, and it appears that they sell the whole facility in a de-trust to a company who is specifically contracted with the state to do that. And I think that Mary Ann Winchester, who is a member of our neighborhood, she's a title officer, works for a title company, she can probably clarify that up a lot more to detail than I can.
Another question from Commissioner Neely.
You're asking for us to facilitate a meeting. I, if we did it in a formal fashion by requesting this to go through the Historic Review Board, is that inappropriate venue, as far as you're concerned?
As long as the Historic Review Board can address the issues of traffic and parking and the impact that this will have on the neighborhood.
No, they probably wouldn't be able to do that, but--
Yes.
They would deal with the design elements that you've alluded to.
Truthfully, I feel that we are making progress on the design issue. Now, we may not ultimately come to a conclusion. There may be a point in time when they absolutely say, no, we can't do anymore, and we say, that doesn't meet our criteria. But we haven't reached that yet, so I can't say that we're gonna get there, because we have had two meetings, and we have another meeting scheduled, and they have taken our ideas back with them. We've redlined drawings, they've taken them back, they've met with their architecture yesterday, and they've made the proposal to bring it back to us next Monday.
Mr. Mayor, secondly, so I have it clear, then the state-- well, I'll ask the next lady that question. Now, when were you at, were you at the first meeting of the planning commission when this facility was first proposed?
It never went to the planning commission.
It never went to the planning commission?
I brought, yeah, I brought the information to the planning commission about a month ago, and they said it was not brought before them.
Wasn't brought before them, so the issue of traffic, it was not raised, no doubt?
I don't believe so.
At that time? I was curious, know why that wasn't raised. Thank you.
Do you have an answer over here?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Alec, it's treated here as if it were a single-family house, and I know that that's one of the difficulties with all of this. What's added on to that is it's in the Ainsworth neighborhood with the overlay. If that weren't there, you'd have the same situation as you had in Deer Meadows. If they meet the definitions, the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act probably prohibits us from doing anything.
Mr. Lynch has considerable knowledge in this field. Yes, please.
Yeah, just following up on that.
Yes.
Don't we ordinarily require home designs, driveway width, driveway lengths and whatnot, sufficient to assure us that we won't have on-street parking? Is that controlled any way in our--
I'll ask Brian to start with that, and I'll respond.
Yeah.
There's basic requirements that they have to have a garage for two cars or whatever, they have to have a driveway to permit two cars for parking, but there's no specific-- I mean, if they want to turn their front yard into an asphalt driveway, they can do that, because we can't, we don't govern when people do that.
No, I understand that, but what I'm concerned about are the issues that Mr. Warnock brings up relative to the number of vehicles and potentially a bus. Do we have any mechanism that we can employ that would assure that those would not be parked on the street?
You could amend your traffic ordinances, but as far as land use is concerned, as far as the basic parameters of a single-family house, you have clear and objective criteria, so long as they meet that and have a single-family house, and as I said before, this is considered single-family, you can't do anything.
But does it not have to meet the conditions of the CCNRs that talk about complexity and scope?
Yes, and that's the issue, I think, that I want to talk to the commission about tonight.
Commissioner Holliday has a question.
And just to be clear on this, I'm guessing that the neighborhood wouldn't be happy with the bus being parked on a pad next to the house, either?
Well, according to the current plan, there is no room left on the lot for a pad-- Well, according to the current plan, there is no room left on the lot for a pad alongside, there's nine feet on one side and less than 11 on another, under their current proposed plan.
All I'm saying is that there, you know, there becomes, you know, there's a whole bunch of other issues that have to be dealt with.
If there is room for them to do that, there's nothing that would prevent them, the only requirement would be that within the CCNRs, there is a requirement for screening of that vehicle.
Certainly, and that's something that, as I understand, the city can't enforce. And once again, I would move at this point that we move into executive session and hear from the city attorney, because I have some questions that I want to ask, and I won't be able to ask the right questions of the parties without hearing from the attorney.
I would too, because there's still maybe issues that come up that would require us to go back into executive session.
We can come back and ask the question.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, next?
Okay, thank you.
And your name and address, please.
I'm Sherlene Warnock, and I live at 1-9131, Lot Whitcomb Drive. And I'm going to give a real brief history, because I think once you get to Mary Ann, who's the title officer, will answer a lot of your questions. Prior to breaking ground on Lot 9, the city and the state were clearly warned that our CCNRs were improperly viewed and approved by the original developer, Don Phillips. The city and state were also clearly warned that the lot was located in historic district and specific guidelines needed to be met. In spite of the warnings, the city issued the permit improperly and the state broke ground. You all knew, yet you proceeded with the project anyway. Litigation is certainly an option, but may be avoided through compromise. Although some progress has been made in regard to architecture, it is evident, in my opinion, that Lot 9 still may not work, and other lots are available that are better suited for this project. Take the time, I'm asking the city to take the time to select a more appropriate lot, and then work together to complete this project. Incidentally, the state was given information on lots available that would work better, and the original developer even offered to do water hookups and everything else for them, and they've denied it. Furthermore, in selecting a new lot, and this is where we're going to get to the Fair Housing Act, and my feelings on it, furthermore, in selecting a new lot for this facility, please keep in mind that the spirit of the Fair Housing Act has been pushed to the limit by the final phase of the Fairview project. In fact, I believe this project crosses the line. When the Fair Housing Act was written, it could not possibly have been foreseen that Fairview would be closing and that all residents, including the most severe, would be placed in a single-family residential neighborhood. While the project worked for the most part at first, and residents were placed effectively, we find ourselves years later at a point where the definition of five in one home constituting a single family cannot be so vaguely applied to those left at Fairview with such complex needs. The concentration of five of the most severe residents in one facility creates special needs that change the flavor of the single-family scope. Just ask the residents at Deer Meadows. We had one of those residents, on her own accord, someone we're not familiar with, knock on our door last night, and she said, "Do you realize what's happening next to you?" And I said, "We're making progress on architecture." She said, "It's not just the architecture. It's a care facility, being run in your neighborhood. Your traffic will increase. The noise level will increase." And are any of those residents here to speak to that tonight? Their experience? Is it makeup? Okay. So, I'll continue. The staffing alone constitutes an assisted care facility, as well as the structure itself. The impact on the neighborhood of parking, traffic, and noise proves that concentration of these last placements do indeed cross the line from single-family to care facility. The state needs to stop, step back, and really look at the ramifications of their current actions, and the city needs to really look at the impact of the state's action on its citizens. Changes need to be made. It is time for the city and state to admit their mistakes and work together towards solution. I don't know if the, if you folks have all seen what this facility looks like? Have any of you seen it? I guess the picture's worth a thousand words. I also want to give you, and I'm not going to read this, because it's kind of an emotional letter, I'm just going to hand a copy, Doug Neely here, and you guys can share it, it's a letter that my daughter wrote to First Lady Kitzaber about the appearance of buildings, and it's emotional, so I can go into it, I'm just going to hand that to him, and I'm going to let Mary Ann come up.
Got it.
Sorry.
Yes, there's a question from Commissioner Lynch.
Just one question, Mrs. Warnock, and that is, you said that the, in your opinion, the city inappropriately or illegally issued a building permit, and you base that accusation on?
Oh, I feel it was inappropriate, because when I came down, first of all, I explained that the plans were signed off by, our CCNRs clearly call for an architectural review committee of three people. One person came down and acted on our behalf, and that was the original developer. When the neighbors first heard about this project, we were told that it would have to meet all of our CCNRs, it would have to follow all the city codes, and that we would be notified and we would have a say. That took away our voice.
So it's your position that the city should enforce your CCNRs?
No, that's not my position at all. My position is, is that when I alerted them to the fact, prior to issuing the permit, that our CCNRs were violated, they should have looked into it, instead of telling me, basically, to go home, there's nothing I can do.
But doesn't that put us in an enforcement mode?
Well, there was the other issues too, that I questioned at the time of the historic review, not going through those proper channels, and that type of thing. You were alerted, you were told that there were problems. And I guess as a citizen, I would have asked that, instead of being told, "Sorry, there's nothing we can do for you, lady, go home," and that's basically what I got, that they would look into it for me. And that's where I feel.
I guess we continually face this issue of CCNRs, and it's one that I'm not entirely clear on, and Ed's attempted to clear it up, but, you know, I'm beginning to get the feeling that we ought to prohibit the establishment of any CCNRs. It seems to me.
I don't think that that's the answer at all. I think it's what it is, it's just, it's an information, it's a tool of information, and knowing the probability and the issues surrounding this facility, and the city was quite aware of it, because the exact same facility was built in Deer Meadows, I would think at that point the city would take a look at it and not issue the permit without at least letting us see the plans first, and that didn't happen.
And I understand that, and please don't, please don't misunderstand me, I sympathize with what you're going through. My point was that when a developer establishes CCNRs, and the homeowners adopt them, and then to hand that off to the city and say, you know, "This is what we've got, now y'all make sure that we all live up to it," I'm not sure that's something I'm comfortable with.
Well, and you're talking about different processes here. When you're talking about enforcement of CCNRs after the plat is built out and established, that's one thing, but prior to completion of the plat, that's another thing. And I could get into where we, my husband could speak better to this, when he sat on city council for a different city, and developers started answering development issues through CCNRs. In other words, the improvement of ingress and exgress to the plats, and those then getting passed on to the homeowners. And I know that we were involved in a situation where the city lost in that. So it's, I understand, there's great points there, and I don't know that we want to, I think you just need to know that it wasn't done properly, and therefore, we're where we're at, not, whether you hold responsibility in that, you know, I can't say, but it wasn't done properly, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you for that, Ms. Warnock. Someone else wishes to speak? Name and address, please.
Sure, it's Mary Ann Winchester, 1-912 on Lot Whitcomb. What I have before me is the Comprehensive Land Use Planning Ordinance that was adopted in 1989, that said that the state has the right to act as a one-to-four family resident based on the fact that it was difficult to establish a residence for the mentally disabled people. In the same ordinance, under 197.665, the city or county may impose zoning requirements on the establishment of a residential home in areas described in this subsection, provided that these requirements are no more restrictive than those imposed on other non-farm, single-family dwellings in the same zoning, which then puts it back to the fact that they are exactly a one-to-four family resident, which is required to abide by the CCNRs. The state bought the property in the name of Oregon Housing Facility, which then they sold to Specialized Housing. They took out a construction loan, or a loan to build the facility for $450,000, which is roughly $200,000 more than the subdivision, the highest-priced lot. What they have done is they have deeded the property to Specialized Housing, and in the deed of trust, it states that they are required to abide by the CCNRs of the subdivision. It also states in the deed of trust that they're operating as a business. And this is conflicting information to me as a title representative, how can you have one if you can't have the other? Is it a one-to-four, or is it a business? If it's a business, then they need to adhere to the guidelines as shown in the Oregon Land Zone Regulations. The CCNRs clearly state that it must have a minimum of a two-car garage. Everyone in our subdivision has a two-car garage, but this facility will not. The CCNRs references parking, and it also references the fact that no business is allowed in our subdivision. So we're faced with the fact that the state has one set of rules, and we as homeowners have a second set of rules. I do have, I have pictures of the facility that's in the Gaffney Lane, I think it's called Karen Gia subdivision, it fronts Deer Meadows. I've driven by there myself, and it's very evident that it does not meet the specifications. The, yeah. The one on the left is the care facility. The one on the right is the residential home of one of our occupants that is mental, not mentally disabled, handicapped. Now, if you can tell me that those two are the exact identical floor plans, I would say great, tell me. This one here, it has bars on it, the residents can't interact with the neighborhood. We have no problem with residents interacting with our neighborhood, what we're saying is, if we have to see that care facility the way it is, then why can't it, oh, sorry, why can't it meet what we have to do? So we're saying to you guys to help us. One thing that was interesting for me was, I was reading the minutes of your meeting on the 21st, and you guys said you had the right to enforce the CCNRs, but you chose not to.
What was the date?
The 21st of April. Let me get, I'll actually get it out here for you.
My recollection is, there were certainly questions about whether or not we had the right to enforce them, but I don't remember any clear.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Clear answer.
Okay. The very last paragraph says that there is an issue over the city's ability to enforce the covenants if the city is not a party. That was an issue raised earlier by Neely, he will look at that. Even though the city might not be a party, there may be some theory under which the city could come in. Normally, homeowner association covenants are for the homeowners to hire a lawyer and enforce. That would be tough, budgetary, and other political, social issues that the commission would have to make. You guys have the right to do that, you guys have the right to enforce the same rules that we do, and we would like to know what your positions are. If you guys say, yes, they are a one-to-four family, then fine, let them abide by the same rules that we have to. We have no problem with the residents in the facility, we'd love to have them in our community, we just need something that blends exactly as what we had.
Now, when you say one-to-four family, I connotate that to mean somewhere between oh, three to 16 people?
No, that is labeled residential facility, which is a combination, well, see, in conjunction with treatment or training, or a combination thereof for six to 15 individuals. A residential home means residential treatment or training, or an adult foster home licensed by or under the authority of the department, or an adult foster home licensed under ORS 443.705, which provides residential care alone, or in conjunction with treatment or training, or a combination thereof, or five or fewer individuals. So you have two separate issues, you have a facility and a residential home. Now, this has been called an assistant care facility, it's been called a one-to-four family resident, we don't know, no one is giving us specifics. So we want to know, why can't the state abide by not only their deed of trust, which they signed for, and the lender is the state of Oregon, and that clearly says they have to abide by the CCNRs? And they also state in the deed of trust that they must act as a business, but the CCNR says we can't have them. What can we do? The other issue is parking. The parking is 29 feet into the lot. We have to have a two-car garage, that's what the CCNR states.
Commissioner Alley has a question.
Yes.
The question I have, Mary Ann, I didn't hear your last name.
It's Winchester.
Winchester, thank you. The question I have, when you first started out, you've talked about the state taking out the loan for the facility.
Correct, correct.
And then the state picked up the deed, and as they turned it over to the developer or the builder, whoever.
It is, it is within the same entity, yes.
Whatever.
Right.
They laid out some rules in that.
No, what they did was they bought the property, they bought the lot for $78,000 from a private individual. The next document, which is a bargain and sale deed, was from Oregon Housing to Specialized Housing, Inc., which is the one that runs their facilities and leases it out to, say, the care facility or other facilities.
And the agreement says?
The deed of trust, the actual secured document for the loan of $450,000, paragraph nine, states that it has to be in compliance with the CCNRs. Now, if they, I'm sorry.
And where would the typical enforcement of CCNRs occur? Would that not occur in Circuit Court?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch.
Mary Ann, this facility is being designed for between six and 15 people?
That is not correct. It is being designed for five residents, five permanent residents that are either wheelchair-bound or assistant.
Okay, so it's five or fewer?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, thank you for all that.
You're welcome.
Is there someone else now wishes to speak? We've had a lot of information here. Is there someone speaking in a different vein on this? Not repeating some we've already heard, be hope. Okay, thank you. Your name and address, please, sir.
I'm Steve Allen, I reside at 1-9137, Lot Whitcomb Drive. I don't, I think we need a clarification here, and I think you guys need to arrive at this in your executive session about the relationship between our CCNRs and what we call an architectural review committee, and what we call a historic board review, okay? And I think it needs to be determined and clarified that if some of the residences in the Ainsworth Estates have been subjected to this process that has been approved by the city, and that the city has a hand in, it seems to me the actual factual history on this is that the city, at least directly, I think, perhaps indirectly, administers this through historical review. I think that needs to be clarified so that we can actually say, is the city, in a roundabout way, in this neighborhood, which is atypical, Mr. Holliday? This is not a typical situation for CCNRs. I think you guys need to look at that seriously, okay? Based on what has been done before. And that's really what I wanted to say, based on what some other people.
Yes, Steve, thank you very much for bringing that point to us.
Question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Jack, yes.
So you're focusing, Steve, more on the lack of historic design review, which you see as a requirement for the neighborhood?
Yes.
As opposed to the other CCNRs, for the lack of a better term?
Well, the two are tied together, which, you know, in my mind, is again tied to the building permit process, you know, for a lot of the residents that built in the Ainsworth neighborhood, they had to go through that process, be reviewed, and the city had to approve, okay, those designs in order for them to get a building permit, okay? If you didn't do, like, for my house, for instance, I wanted to have a double garage door, okay? But before I could get my building permit, that was not allowed through the CCNRs and historic review. I had to go to oversized, single garage doors, okay? That's an example. There are many other examples in the neighborhood, specific issues that people had to go through in building their residence that required the hand of the city in that to make that determination.
Right.
Before the permit was issued.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
See what I'm saying there?
Yep, I do.
Okay.
Before we go to you back, is there someone else now wishes to speak who hasn't talked yet, sir?
Good evening. I'm Craig Ostergren. I live at 12541 Comminger Court. In 1992, my wife and I, along with my son, the house is partly owned by an estate, purchased a lot, actually, we bought a double lot in Ainsworth Estates. The purpose was, my son being in a wheelchair, we needed to build a fully accessible home. We were aware of the CCNRs when we got in the neighborhood. We thought we had designed a home that would fit. We did a couple years' worth of homework. We talked to lots of architects, developers, builders. We, we reviewed, or we viewed several homes that had actually been built for someone in a wheelchair. When we submitted our plans, we were subjected to, and I, and I didn't get them with me tonight, I wish I had, but there were nine different, either correspondence or meetings, that had to do with us, our plans and the historical board. And we were basically told every detail in our house, inside and out, into and including having to submit our landscaping to be approved or disapproved by the historical board, which they did with some changes they made. We were told what types of windows to put in. What else was there? The garage, there was an issue about our garage. Basically, it took us until the last, the last approval of our house came in August of 96, which was one month after we had been in. But, a- as I said, you know, there's no objection in this neighborhood to, to the facility or the residence. In fact, I, I think my son would love to see some other people in the neighborhood that were in wheelchairs. But the thing that bothered us the most is, is the facility, you've looked at the plans. It doesn't fit. It doesn't fit on the lot. We bought a double lot so our house wouldn't look oversized. That cost extra money. We were told to put in landscaping that softened the size and scope of our house. We were told the roof pitch. Basically, every detail of our house, we were told, here's how you go, you're going to do it, or we won't issue a building permit. We were badly in need of the house. We were living in a non-accessible home for several years. As I said, we bought the lot in 92. We didn't get to move in until July of 96. And I, I felt that it was very unfair that we are subjected to this type of thing, including, especially the biggest thing seemed to be, how did our house look on the outside? How did it impact the neighborhood? Some of the things, the questions were, what impact does the way our house looked have on adjoining property? That was a very big issue. And yet, the facility that's going in, obviously, to me, is going to have a huge impact. It doesn't fit the size and scope of the neighborhood. The details just don't fit. And I just felt it, it was an unfair process for us to be put through when apparently the state was exempt. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ostergren. Thank you very much.
My name is Cheryl Ostergren, and I live at 12541 Comminger Court. And that's our house on that picture. And we were just put through so much, and it was so hard to deal with all of that, and to be told that the state doesn't have to. Our house was, they asked Claire if our house could be seen from the Ainsworth Estates. If our house took anything away from the historical value, did, could be seen, if the size of the house could be seen from there, anything that took away from the historical house, then our house would not be allowed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Claire Mett. I live at one, whoops, wait a minute, 1107 Taylor Street. Part of my time, most of my time is spent up at 19130 Lot Whitcomb Drive, which is the Ainsworth House, and which is, it's in the center. I also, what, I was really torn as to whether to get up and talk or not, but I kind of have a dual role in that I am on the historic review board for the city, and was sitting on the board at the time that the design review guidelines for the Ainsworth Estates were adopted by the historic review board. I, of course, stepped down because of any conflict of interest, but I was present, you know, during the hearings for that. We have since reviewed only two houses that, by the historic review board, only two houses within the subdivision have gone through historic review because they did not fit within certain parameters of the guidelines that we had set forth. I, again, with both of those, did, did step down, but because those two houses were reviewed, one because of its size, one because it was of a different design than the rest of them, it's the one that's adjacent to the parking lot. It's kind of a new old house, a Portland, old Portland style. If that one is being, if that one was reviewed because of its difference to the other houses in the subdivision, other than the Ainsworth House, then I think by all rights, this one should be also.
Questions? Mr. Lynch?
One of the houses that was reviewed, obviously, was the Ostergren's.
Ostergren's.
Did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Thank you. Who made the determination that these two homes would be subjected to a design review? Was that the city?
I believe the staff did.
Okay.
But it was, you know, again, the other houses did not come before us, but, you know, it's like a lot of the policies that we do have as far as fence and, you know, that type of thing. We have different policies that are basically done by staff review, as long as they fit within certain guidelines.
All right, thanks.
I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead, Ed.
I'm, I'm confused about the, now, Mary Ann, she-
Winchester.
Winchester, over here. She just stated that you, that neighborhood does not allow businesses.
That's the CCNRs.
Yeah, but yet, isn't that a business that you run?
We are not, the Ainsworth House and the property on it is not covered by CCNRs. We are exempt from the CCNRs.
And you're, and you're in the, you're basically located in, right in the area, however.
Well, we're smack dab in the middle of it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. But that one business is allowed-
We have a con-
...to the CCNRs. That was specifically stated that they were accepted from the CCNRs, but every other house had to meet the CCNRs.
So any, so any, any future request that the Ainsworth Corporation or whatever makes-
Nope, it's not, not anything that they, the Bed and Water-
Well, I don't know, they're, the largest small corporation, but the fact is, a company or whatever, any future request for expansion brings them then under the same rules as the rest of the projects up there, I'm sorry, the homes in that area, is that right? I mean, any future-
We have a conditional-
If you, if you, I'm just curious, I don't want to get into Ainsworth thing, but I'm just hearing this business, you know, the business in the area, traffic and so forth. If the Ainsworth House were to request expansion at any point, would you have to go through the same process as you're asking others here?
No, we have to go through a much more severe process-
Okay, but there, yeah.
-which we just did. We have, we are a business operating in a residential area, and we have a conditional use permit. We just went through a very long-
I don't know, I-
-planning process. And we, we, we really, because we are a conditional use permit in a residential area, have to go through quite a large, quite a bit different process than, than a resident.
And you have to comply with the same rules then the rest of the house?
We are, again, are not subject to the CCNRs, however, we try to, you know, a lot of them are kind of no brainers, but-
And then lastly, let me say, I hear people, and I really appreciate people who are in cities, we always find some cooperation amongst ourselves, but the fact is that I, I hear, you know, about the business, and I hear about the Ainsworth, and I hear about the traffic and so forth and so on. But just for everyone's information, a lot of this stuff doesn't come, like your, your, whatever you've just done, that doesn't come before the commission, this commission.
Unless it's appealed.
So, so people are aware of that, you know, it looks like everything comes through here. This doesn't happen like, it doesn't happen like that. Maybe that's how it has to, supposed to happen, I don't know, but we, it just doesn't happen like that, so a lot of this stuff is new to me, at least, information is new to me, by the way. Thank you.
Commissioner Neely had a question.
This, I'm sure some, it's, it's a query that came out in my mind as we were going through it, and I'm sure if there's anything that you say that's legally wrong, it'll be corrected in our executive session by the attorney. There is a, there is a difference, I guess, your house is actually designated on the historical register, not only the national-
It's on the national-
-but it's also on the local register too, I presume.
Right, it's, it was on the county, it was before this-
No, no, that's all right. Don't, don't, don't answer the question.
Well, no, I'm-
That, that was a precursor to the question. Okay, stop. Stop. I, I, yeah. What I want to know is, there's a distinction between the other houses. I presume these houses themselves are not designated historical structures. They are within the historic district, and therefore, go ahead. If, if that's the question I'm asking, is a distinction.
There is actually not a historic district. Before, okay, I can do this now, right?
Yes.
Before, before we were, before this property was annexed into the city, it was part of the county. And it had a historic overlay on it, consisting of nine acres, which was also, as far as I know, included in the national register, or national register property, you know, the property around it. And it specified nine acres surrounding it. And that was what the historic overlay was on with the county. And usually with the county, once a property is taken into the county by the city, the historic review board also adopts that same overlay.
The houses themselves, however, are not on the historic register as entities.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you, Claire. Oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
I don't know that Claire's at first going to answer it.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I guess for whoever it is that, that is the homeowners' association here, who, who appoints the architectural review committee? I can answer that question.
Please.
Yeah. The architectural control committee is defined in the CCNRs as the declarant, and must consist of a minimum of three members that are appointed by the declarant. In our instance, the declarant is Don Phillips. Up until two days ago, we did not realize that we have the legal, possibly have the legal wherewithal to remove him from that, even though he owns no property within the development at this point in time. So, when we said that the architectural control committee made the decision erroneously, we're referring to the meeting that took place between city staff member, a state staff member, and Don Phillips. When the map was laid down and Don got to see what he was looking at for the first time, and it was, oh, well, go do that, yeah, that's fine, oh, okay, I'll sign off on that. And, oh, by the way, city and state, I don't know that I have the authority to make this decision, by the way. And his conversation has been relayed to numerous other people within the community, and I know you, maybe legally it would be hearsay, but that's actually what happened. And that's part of why, you know, people say, well, don't, didn't you assume some culpability when you allowed that to occur? You know, upfront, the city knew that there was only one guy there, and it says a minimum of three. Of course, now, he can go back and he can backdate a proxy. He can go back and, you know, fabricate whatever documentation he wants to support it. But, you know, that goes way back.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, can I make clarification on, on a couple other points?
All right.
One, the historic review process that we've alluded to, what may be confusing to you is the fact that that is embedded in the CCNRs. So, the CCNRs dictate that we have to go through that process. So while the CCNRs are not enforceable by the city, and it's up to the homeowners or the homeowners' association to do that, the historic review process is your process, and, and it's embedded in our documentation.
Go ahead.
Then the question about the running that it's a business must be a business, and the CCRs don't allow the business, do the zoning laws allow for a business to be in our type of a development? And that's a question that I would have, that you can have. And then the third one was, if we're looking for a strategy to try to do something about this, can you not tie the historic district, the traffic and the parking issues together with the business in the neighborhood?
I'll talk to the commission about those things.
Dan has one more clarification. Or do you?
Yeah, I did, but I got lost there for a second.
It's a senior moment, Blaine.
And, and, well, and then one other thing is, Claire said that only two houses were, were actually forced to go through that review.
There we go. That was the question. Of the, of the number of houses that you have in development, how many have actually gone before the historic review?
Only two have progressed be on the staff. Every one of us was subject to the review. But only two did not make the modifications that staff required, or voluntarily made them, that require the staff to say, obviously, you're not willing to comply. We have a higher authority, the historic review board, you need to go before them. All of us were subjected to the same review. All of us but two were able to comply at the staff level.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, any last, oh, yes, sir, back there.
Barry Brohm, 19141 Lot Whitcomb Drive. And I have no idea if this has a real relevance to or not, but Mr. Warnock is, is really, has great confidence that things are moving well with the state. I don't think I have that much confidence. And the reason I say that is because on the Saturday prior to the Tuesday that you, that the city issued a building permit, the state went into that lot and excavated and got everything up ready to go for that footing, to pour footings on the day the permit was issued. And so, I, I have a feeling that the state may, may go along with the meeting as, as long as it suits them, and then drop out. And so, I would ask your assistance, if at all possible, to, to help us work so that we can facilitate that state, so the state just doesn't think they're dealing with a couple of local residents and, and not just the city of Oregon City.
Thank you, sir. And there was one more, I thought. Yes, sir.
My name's Brad McParland, 19127 Lot Whitcomb. I'm just confused by the fact that you say that you can't enforce these things. I built a shop in my backyard, and it went through the historic review board. They told me what the type of siding, what type of roofing, what pitch. I mean, it's just, it's confusing to me.
The, the, I think the answer is, there's a difference between CCNRs and then the requirements under, under our, our historic designation. We can enforce them, but we can't enforce CCNRs, at least we've been told we can't.
But still, the state isn't going through the same process that everyone else had to go through to have their homes with what they got on it. I mean, I've got LP siding on my shop, which I can't have reversed because it's-
Yeah.
Just because of shop.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Now, I think we can, oh, yes, sir? Don't mean to shut you off, sorry.
Bray Street, 19143 Lot Whitcomb. My concern is that the plans were, I, I made requests several times prior to issuing of the permit to see the plans, and I was denied. And the permit, the plans were not available until after the permit was, was issued. And it's always been my, my understanding that a permit needs to be posted on the building site. To my knowledge, there is no permit posted on this site. Another concern is that the siding of this group home is next to a recreation facility, which includes a swimming pool. I, I know these people are handicapped, either mentally or physically, or they're, okay, leave it at that. I also went by one of the other group homes, the one over off on Deer Point, and the front door was open, nobody was guarding the door, and this leads me to believe that there are liability problems, and other things that have already been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have something to add that's different?
Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify just one thing?
Yes, please, Brian.
I think the issue really was that we couldn't give them copies of the, the building plans because they were copyrighted until we got a clearance from the architect who drew the plans. We, we allowed them to view, and I was at the front counter when Sam was out there and said, you can look at the plans, but we can't give you copies until we get clearance.
I understand, Brian, thank you.
Okay, I was there at least three times in the week prior to the issuing of permit, and I was denied all three times for one reason or another.
Thank you. Is there something different you wish to add to that?
I just wanted to clarify one issue.
All right, come here.
Want me to state my name and I'll run over again? One thing that I wanted to let you know is, the facility that is on the left side of the photo is two lots. Ours is one. And that is the big concern, is we want to make sure that the plans or the actual design meet the- And that is, the big concern is, we want to make sure that the plans or the actual design meet the lot. This is, this is two lots with, with no garage and onsite parking. Ours does not have any garage and no parking. So, my concern again is to let you know that what you see there on the left-hand side is a double lot, lots two and three, and ours is only a single lot. So, my concern again is parking.
When you say ours, you mean the disputed lot.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I consider ours because we are homeowners of Ainsworth Estates.
Thank you.
But if you guys choose to look at, this is all of the properties that the state owns, or the specialized housing and plat maps to go with it, so you can see the size of the lots in comparison to ours.
I'm confused because you say the one-
Left and right. You mean vice versa.
Are we reversed? Is this not your house?
Yes, and I'm saying the one on the-
This is, this is your house, right? This one here, that's your house?
Correct.
And this is the, this is the care facility or-
That is a double lot, your facility.
The other facility that we're talking about.
Excuse me, the other facility that, that faces Deer Meadows.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, something new?
It's probably not new, but I don't think the commission's addressing it. My name is Cheryl Forsberg, I live at 12408 Comerter Drive. I'm basically hearing from the commission that we're on our own with the CCNRs.
Well, we haven't made a decision yet, ma'am.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, please don't jump to conclusion, please.
Okay, regardless of that, I have real concerns about the parking. We already have one facility, one, we already have a, a home in the neighborhood. We have the bed and breakfast, which brings in, which brings in a hundred people guests. So, we have parking on the street there. And now we have this care facility that has a garage that doesn't even function as a garage, and is going to have staff members coming in and out of there all day. That lot happens to be right next to the swimming pool, which is one of the reasons we moved into the neighborhood. I have five children, and I'm concerned about the traffic. And I'm assuming that that is an issue that the city does deal with. And I'm concerned that there are now two businesses operating in that neighborhood. And I, I bought in a neighborhood so that my children would be safe. And I, and I think that's something the city needs to address. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a question for her? No, all right, thank you. Now, I think we can adjourn to an executive session, and we'll go on down the hall. You all can just stay put. Are we rolling? Fine, thank you. Thank you all for your patience. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, after the discussion we had, and after hearing the people here and their offer of mediation, I think this time it behooves this committee and commission that I make the motion that we instruct the city manager to begin the process of the mediation between the homeowners, Ainsworth homeowners, the builder of the project, and the state, and get together and see where we can go from there as a community.
Second. Moved by Alec, seconded by Holliday. Roll call. Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all for your patience, thanks for your input, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
I do have another request.
Oh, yes, please, go right ahead, Jack.
I do have another request, and see if there's consensus on the commission to give the city manager direction. And that is, there is a fairness issue, really, with respect to siding these facilities. The impacts of these facilities have been outlined, I think, in, in a lot of detail. And it involves traffic, and it involves the appearance of the facility. It does not, it does not, for the most part, involve the residents of the facility. But they definitely have an impact on the neighborhood. And with that in mind, I would like to know, because I have the feeling that we have far more than our fair share of these facilities in Oregon City. And I, I'd like to get from Clackamas County, a, a detailed listing of these facilities, five and fewer, throughout the county, and just see if our neighbors, the other cities in Clackamas County, really are accepting some of the responsibility that we have been accepting.
I think that's a good idea. Any questions of you? Mr. Manager, did you under- Chris, you, you understood the instructions and the intent of the instructions?
Yes, absolutely.
We'd like you to pursue that, please.
Will do.
Thank you. I'm sorry, yes? Then we'll close.
On the list that I gave you, here are all of the facilities we did-
No, that doesn't even come close.
No, no, this is only what is owned by Specialized Housing.
I'm not interested in that.
No, Mary Ann, I'm really not interested in that. What I'm interested in is all of these facilities, five and fewer.
In the county we're talking about. We can see what our neighbors-
I don't care who's running them.
Yeah, right. Steve? Well, I, I think, I think if you could give that information to our, to our manager, we'd appreciate that, so we can go on. Thank you all, and those of you who want to leave, please feel free to move on out. Be quiet as you can, if you would, please. Thank you. Now, the whole audience is going.
We'll see you.
Oh, hey, Mr. Alec. Commissioner? He's wandering off.
Oh, you can't stop him from talking.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we're down to item number seven. This is Commission Report 9980, Request for Waiver of Fees for Clackamas Park for Family Fair. And Rocky, would you like to speak first, or to just give us an overview again what the family fair is, and we can go from there, so that everybody's up to speed on that? Just name and address.
Rocky Smith Jr., 615 Lawton Road, Oregon City. I'm the coordinator for the Dornbecker Family Fair. And I, I'll just say a couple of words about what the fair is all about. But I'll have Marvel Williams, our fundraising chair, address the request. The fair is going to be happening the 21st through the 23rd, which is coming up very soon, it's this month, at Clackamas Park. It's a joint effort between Families for Dornbecker and the Oregon City School District. And it has really grown into a huge community effort. There's, with all the schools involved, we have a huge support from the students working on many activities for the fair, as well as they're getting their parents involved and other relatives, one of which is actually doing boat rides down there the entire weekend. So, there's a huge amount of people in the community that are working on this event that we hope grows bigger and bigger as, as, as we go on. Also, city clubs, the Optimus Club and other, other groups are, are really helping with this, too. I will just say one more thing, and, and that is, all the money that we raise from this event goes to Dornbecker Children's Hospital, and everybody that's associated with the event are volunteers. And so, we spend a lot of time, none of which is paid, to do this event. I, I'll have, I want to give Marvel Williams a chance to talk about the request. She's the fundraising chair for our group.
Thank you. Margot? You name an address for the record, if you would.
My name is Marvel Williams, 7931 Southeast King Road, Milwaukee.
Like that last name.
Williams.
Like that one, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. But not junior. Thank you for letting me come and speak to you. I'll keep it, I just want to say what Families for Dornbecker is. We are all families or friends of families that have patients at Dornbecker. I'm a grandmother of a patient who's now 13, and a girl. And she had two heart operations at Dornbecker by the time she was six months. She had, she lost one kidney with cancer when she was three. And then she lost her other kidney when she was eight, and had a transplant. My son gave her one of his. However, she's 13 and she's doing fantastic. So, anyway, but we, everyone involved with our chapter has stories like this, or our friends or relatives. We are not just, we don't only do the Oregon City Fair. We just got through with a cabaret that we did in southeast Portland. All of our chapter members, the majority are from Oregon City and Milwaukee, and some in the southeast area that are close to Milwaukee. We have raised 142,000 so far in the last eight years for the hospital. As Rocky said, we're all volunteers, and no one gets paid. Last year, because of the weather at the fair, the fair only raised, what, just under 4,000? Something like that? But it was the weather that did it. The reason it was put into report that we are saying that we can only pay a thousand, that's not exactly true, that we're requesting that because we have gotten donations from your community to help the cost. And this is what we have gotten. We don't want to have to take anything out of the profits if we don't have to, to pay any expenses. We have a banner that went up this year across, if you haven't seen it, I think it just went up today or yesterday, that has goes across, has gone across the road, and Dark Horse Comics in Milwaukee purchased that banner for us. So, we're trying to see that everything is paid for, so that we don't have to use anything that we make and take it away from the kids at the hospital. Are there any questions? I don't want to do this too long, I know you have had a busy night.
We appreciate that, we appreciate that.
So, if you just have any questions.
Commissioner Holliday has a question, I think.
I have a question, but it's not for you, ma'am.
Oh.
Thank you. And I, there's no questions for Mrs. Williams?
So, what we're-
Okay, thank you.
The thing that I would like to say is, it just dawned on me before I came. I very much understand, if this is your busiest weekend, where you're coming from. I, we did not realize this, but something just hit me on the way here. They compared that area to last year. But last year, that same weekend happened to be Memorial Day weekend, because of the way the dates fell. So, if you're comparing it to the same weekend last year, I don't know, maybe it was full that weekend, too. But it wasn't the Memorial Day, it was the Memorial Day weekend last year, because of the way the dates fell.
And this is a week ahead of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anything?
Thank you very much, Margot.
Well, we hit that one on the head, because that's where I was headed. Mr. McClung? Being that, being that from my living room window, I can see the RV park. Living in the old historic district and being on the hill where I can see those things, the place appears to me to be, especially, you know, at the beginning of summer, to be mostly empty. You know, even on the weekends, even the weekends we had, you know, pretty serious fishing going on, you know, a couple, three weeks ago, there, there were a few RVers down there, but not a whole bunch. Is this, is this an overinflation of what we might expect to receive on that particular weekend, $2,500?
Actually, we went backwards for three years and looked at the revenue that we made. And this was an average of the three years during that period of time.
Thanks, sir.
I'm going to go ahead. First of all, it's not truly a waiver of fees, it's a request that the Metro Enhancement paid the balance. And I'm going to move that the Metro Enhancement Fund paid the balance of $1,575 to meet the fee requirements needed by Dornbecker and the school, high school.
I'll second that for discussion.
Moved by Neely and seconded by Alec for discussion. Commissioner?
Well, if we're looking at using both Metro Enhancement and the revenues from the RV park to attempt to balance the general fund, it seems to me to be, put us in a difficult position. While I suppose technically, Doug, you're right, this isn't a waiver of fees, which you're, what we're talking about is, well, I have, I have difficulty with that. It is a waiver of fees. I mean, it is, as far as I'm concerned. You may be able to make a technical argument. We've had a lot of good causes come forward, not the least of which was the chamber, but that may not be the most important, but there have been others, the, I can't remember off the top of my head. And I just have a, I have a real problem with waiving fees under any conditions, but particularly now, when we are, when we're looking at the difficulties that we are with the, with the general fund. I, I can't support the motion.
The, that's all right. I would, I would, I would mention that, at this point, the Metro Enhancement Fund is not part of the general fund.
No, I understand that, but it, but, but it's certainly being talked about in that, in that area. And, you know.
Commissioner Holliday?
Well, on the one hand, I agree with Jack that, that in reality, this is a waiver of fees. Because, I mean, you know, if my wife gives me 50 bucks, it pretty much all still comes out of the same checking account, no matter how we look at it. So, whether it's coming out of Metro Enhancement or somewhere else, it's money the city has, and we, you know, we're just putting it from one fund to the other. On the other hand, although in, in the past, in a different commission, there was some expression of not wanting to waive fees for every project that came along, I submit this is a different commission than it was a year ago. So, if it was up to me, I would not only support waiving the 1,575, but I, I would support waiving everything other than our actual costs, which would be the electrical panels.
That won't be my, that's not my motion, in any case.
I know it's not your motion, I'm just stating my fact under the First Amendment, okay? Thank you, Mr. Neely.
I understand that. What I'd like to say, though, is that there is cost of maintenance, there is cost to, to the parks program, probably to the public works program as well, that I think needs to be reimbursed. I think this is a mechanism of doing it. The fact, I don't regard it as the same thing as taking 50 dollars from your wife and calling it the same thing. It isn't the same thing. It is not funds that is available to the people, to the, to the entities that we identify in the city, namely the Parks Department, Public Works, to provide those services. That's lost to them.
Yes, Jack.
Would there be any, would there be any interest in looking at the same three-day period? What is it, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday? Is that what it is, Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
Actually, you calculated this in four days, did you not? Looks like to me. It's 2:50 a day.
Oh, yeah, you got set-up time.
Yeah.
But what I'm, what I'm thinking is, look at the week just preceding. See what our actual revenues are for that period, the week preceding.
Okay.
And that then would be the-
Would be the, the revenue loss that we'd have to pay.
Yeah, we, we would use that as the actual revenue loss. Because there's a lot of variables, even though, I appreciate what, what Rick did in terms of averaging.
Yeah.
I, you know, something like that I could support, but simply to-
What if it exceeds it?
Well, then? Maybe you would have been better off with the first one.
Mr. Mayor, with, 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 Mr. Mayor, with Jack's suggestion, maybe we, to approve us up to that amount might be the way to resolve his concerns, that, and then resolve Doug's, that means we won't go over. And by any means, we may be able to go under. But let me just say this about the people that you're talking about here. The speed, Commissioner has been here a while. I've heard people come and go, and, and been approved and denied on fee waivers over the past many years. Whenever there's all volunteer program, completely volunteer program, that's what we have hung our hats on. The programs that have been denied are people that are paid to run the programs, and there are some of the profits used for the paid people. That's what that's all about. So, that being said, I can support this, this particular issue. I don't, I think it's a wash either way, whether we, but I, I think that I'd like just to amend the motion, just to satisfy somebody's situation, going back to what Jack says, test the weekend before for the costs. And I would amend to say that we test the weekend before the costs, you know, before this, and we pay, and, or we contribute up to 1,575 for that. And that being said, I drop that, you know, I look for a second to that motion.
Right, second.
Sorry, we, we had a motion on the floor.
That's, that's an amendment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you say that, I'm sorry about that. about that. Any other comment?
Well, I'm a little confused. So, the amendment is to do the test?
To use your, your suggestion of measuring the loss of revenue by the week before.
Okay.
But this still looks like, and, and put the cap on it, and, but it's still being paid out of Enhancement.
Still being paid out of Metro Enhancement, yeah. All right.
Any further? Mr. McLean, do you wish to add something?
I just wanted to make you aware that we are having a national horseshoe convention there the following week. So, it will take all the RV space and-
The following week, but not the week before?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know what the schedule is for the week before, I'd have to check on that.
So, let me ask this question then. If, if we were having this national horseshoe competition the week after, we can assume that the RV park is going to be totally one hundred and thirty thousand percent packed, is that right?
That's the norm, yes.
Yeah. Would, would that, and this, and this question then follows, would that have been the, the same kind of pact that we had on Memorial Day weekend of last year, or was it seventy-five percent?
Can't answer that question.
Okay. So, I, I guess what I, what I'm, where I'm heading here is that we can afford to be a little more generous, especially with a hometown group, especially with a guy who's running the thing that has given thousands of hours to the community. And that's all I got to say.
Mr. Neely?
Mr. Mayor, could I say just one last thing? Is that I did try to get a hold of the Park and Rec Board to get their input on this. I could only get a hold of one, and they had no problems with the way it is, just to let you know.
With waiving the fees?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Neely, did you have a comment?
Well, it's just, I, I don't know that any of that would affect what we have here, except that it, if it's more expensive, we're still, we're still accepting the one thousand, we're still, we're still accepting the three hundred, and we're accepting then the Metro's contribution to be up to one thousand five hundred seventy-five. If it's more heavily used, then, then that total amount's going to be less than what was there before. So, I don't think it's a particular issue.
I think I understand it. Vote?
Roll call on the amendments. Commissioner Davy?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
I think so.
Aye.
Mayor Lewis?
Aye.
Roll call on the motion as amended. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
No.
Mr. Holliday?
No.
Mr. Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Lewis?
Aye. Thank you all, I appreciate the debate. Folks, thank you. I, I do want to say that on the same weekend, Teddy Bear Parade and Run Your Butts Off, yes. It, it appears that we will create some revenue for the city out of all three of the events, in addition to just to the contribution of charity, because some of the people are coming to stay to be in the race, so. Thank you all.
Probably looking for an RV space.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to add to that, that's also Down By The River cleanup with Oregon City Unsolved again.
Yes. That's the over on the other side in the cove itself.
That's correct.
I think that weekend, also, that weekend that you took the previous three from, at least the two before, were also the Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you very much. We'll do them real quick here. Number nine is approval of the minutes, do I have them?
We have eight.
We have eight.
Whoops, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one, beg your pardon, eight.
Can we do eight, nine as a consent?
Well, we have them listed in that way, we can do them quickly. Eight is liquor license application, is there any information on this, anything from the staff? Okay. Do I hear anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd move that we accept the recommendation of the staff on the item eight and approve the liquor license for Branch Brothers Restaurant.
Ninety-nine, seventy-six, all right.
Second.
Alec moves, Holliday seconds. Any questions?
Question?
Roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Holliday?
Aye.
Mr. Neely?
Aye.
Mr. Allen?
Aye.
Aye. Approve of the minutes.
I move for approval of the minutes, have submitted.
Second.
Minutes moved and seconded, Alec and Holliday. Mr. Lynch, were you gonna, Mr. Neely, were you gonna comment?
No, there is a comment on the minutes, but no, no problem with them, I'll, I'll vote for it. I do have a comment afterwards.
Okay. Roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Neely?
Aye.
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 The query I've got is whether, I've got a mic problem or not. I don't have a light, you, I don't, okay, there's no problem with it, okay.
But earlier in the night, it didn't sound to me like it was working.
I did have it down, so I don't, I don't know if it was working or not.
Can, can we get somebody to fix this light?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Alec?
Mr. Mayor, is this input time, fee gen item isn't, is the time, it isn't?
I've got, I've got an appointment to make.
I'm sorry.
I want to appoint two commissioners. I was going to appoint one layperson, but we had a little withdrawal at the last moment, so we're only going to appoint the two commissioners, that's Commissioner Holliday and Commissioner Neely, who are the, reappointed to the Civil Service Board.
Not quite reappointed. One of us is reappointed.
No, sorry, appointed, and he's reappointed, I beg your pardon, so that's my appointment for now on that. No, Mr. Alec, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention the fact that I did, because I heard rumor this, I want to clear it up. We're going, I'm, I'm going to go to Japan and the Sister Cities Program soon, and I want to mention in this room again, I am paying my own way, not one penny of city business, money's going into this. I've had a couple calls on this, and I understand, but I just want to make clear, I am paying my own way.
And he's paying mine, too.
And I'm, and he's paying his, and, and the city has not spent any, although if they'd like to donate to that, I'm happy to have it.
No. Oh, yes, Doug?
I, I do have a question, Brian, for information. We, there apparently has been an expression of interest in procuring the United Methodist Church on Center Street, but the, the intended use would be for an apartment, reconversion to apartment complex. A person who used to be former member of the city staff informed that the people that were interested that you could not do it, and the person is no longer a member of the city staff. I want to know, and when they made the, provided the information, they were not a member. I would like you, I would, I would ask, I'm sure churches in general are conditional uses, but the question would be, can apartment complex be built there in residential neighborhood, and just would appreciate it if you could-
It depends on the underlying zone.
Okay, and if you could check that in that particular zone?
Sure.
Because I know of somebody that I can inform of, of your response.
Back to you, or do you want me to bring it back in?
I don't, I think you bring it back to me, it would be fine.
Is that okay?
I'd personally like to have a copy of that.
Okay. I'll send it to all of you.
And, and on the same issue, if I could ask one more question.
Sure.
Assuming another congregation wanted to buy the facility, would they have to go through the conditional use process again, or, given that it's already sitting there being a church, would that be automatic?
Same, same use, same, no deal. Unless they have some plans to remodel or expand, they'd have to go through the conditional use process.
Okay, thank you.
Are churches conditional, conditional uses?
Yes.
So, if it's in disuse for-
One year, generally, I think it is.
Now, are there any citizens here, a few left, that would like to have an issue brought to the commission's attention that needs to be on our agenda? Would you like to speak now?
My name's Gloria Kaczynski. My address is one nine five six southeast one hundred thirteen, and Portland.
Portland.
And my property here is one three five Lynn Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of a lot of children. This is not a self-serving plea at all, it's just for some ground that has been, was platted in eighteen eighty-nine, and it was a dedicated public accessway.
Have you been to the staff of all of this, or is this new to everybody here?
No, I've talked with Brian.
Okay, all right.
And I can, there is some development proposed to go next door, and they want to use this right-of-way. Legally, they have every right to do this. May I show them your proposed, this is the proposed development next door, and in-
This is upside down, I'm very confused, where are we?
All right, this is upside down.
That's what I thought.
There you go. This is an existing house on this property. These lots are old-platted lots that were platted in nineteen eighty-nine.
Let me guess, this is your buddy's island here, right, Ed?
That's the island, yes.
Right, okay.
Okay. This is my property next door that abuts to this old right-of-way. This looks very plain and simple, the way it's drawn on here. However, in doing some research and finding some pins with a metal detector, this pin is exposed and has a cap on it. This pin is an iron rod, and down here, there's supposed to be a forty-foot right-of-way through here. This is a forty-foot strip. But the pin that's exposed down here is only thirty-three feet, and it's clear down on Lynn Avenue. This one is up on the bank, and is a pin that was set when they surveyed my property. This one is thirty-three feet. So, if you had a, had a ruler and could measure this, if you go by that thirty-three feet, this looks really great. But if you go by forty feet from this pin, this doesn't look so great, because this edge, this west-
We see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, nine feet, ten inches from this, and this porch sticks out here. He wants to put a parking pad that by the, by the county requirements would be approximately eighteen by twenty feet. It's going to be clear out here in this right-of-way.
What's the issue?
Okay, the issue is, I'm sorry I had to digress to get you to that.
No, that's all right.
But, these are the pins, this is the pin that's exposed, okay.
What's the issue?
The issue is, these children, for twenty-two years, we've mowed and maintained this area, the only spot on that whole hill, children have to play, the only spot. There is a park across the street, but we're talking this age children. These are the children that were out there this evening on that property. For twenty-two years, we have maintained this property, kept the, kept the grass down, kept the weeds down, kept the blackberries off of it.
I understand that.
And so, if Mr. Danielson is allowed to develop this in this manner, and not only that, but you see the trees these kids are playing in.
Who owns the property?
It's a public right-of-way. Well, it's public right-of-way.
This is an unvacated street, is that what, is that what it is?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, for a hundred and ten years, it's not been used for anything but open.
You can go back up there.
Is this, is this map, let me just quickly ask you, it's in Charmwood, is this where that, the park, the city has a park?
There's a park across the street.
The park across the street?
Yes.
Are you sure you have this map right, then?
Yes, the park is across, over here, there's a walk-
Singer Creek.
Yeah, it's okay, no, no, there's another park, there's another, there's another park.
Ed, over here, across Lynn Avenue, is where she's talking.
There's another park up on Charmwood, I'm asking.
Maybe up on top.
Up on top.
Maybe up on top.
You're talking about River Crest.
This is all downhill.
Is, Brian, you've been, you've been discussing, is the question of where the right-of-way in fact is, in terms of the, because in order for him to do something, if it is in fact right-of-way, he's going to have to have it vacated, is he not?
Is he, he's requesting to put in a street, as I understand it. It's part of a reestablishment of some lots of record?
Can I tell you what I want to do?
Yes, please, yeah, I would like to get to it.
Do you want that?
No, I don't need that. Bruce Danielson, four thirty Cherry Avenue, Oregon City. I bought an old house on the corner of Lynn and Charmwood. I first submitted plans to the city of Oregon City in ninety-seven, had a little disagreement. They were telling me I had to do this, I thought they were wrong. I resubmitted plans when I advertised lots for sale in the paper. I would like to put a driveway into the old house. I'd like to put a thirty-five foot driveway off of Lynn Avenue. The city tells me I can't do that, so I'm forced to put a hundred and thirty-five foot driveway in off of East Street, which is a dedicated street right-of-way. According to what I've been told by the city of Oregon City, it has to be sixteen feet wide, and it has to be built to street standards. So, I am basically trying to do what the city told me to do. I advertised the property in the Oregonian for a week, I had several calls on it, I accepted the first legitimate offer, and then to complete the sale, I have to provide access to the remaining property, which is the old house that I still own. Now, I'd be pretty happy to have the council make this street, give this street to these people, and let me come in off Lynn Avenue, because I got another chocolate property in Oregon City where the previous three owners have maintained the dirt for fifty years, and I'd love you to have it, give it to me, so I don't have to spend a thousand dollars to have it vacated down the line.
Yeah, but Bruce, in fairness, now, aren't we talking about, you wanted access, it's right on the corner, and it's a very steep grade going down there, is that, isn't that true? I mean, it's not quite as simple when we look at a one-dimensional-
It's a, it's a hundred-by-hundred lot, you'd probably have a six-foot drop if you go to the south end of the property, where the driveway would go. Right now, where, where the road is, it's probably a ten or twelve-foot drop.
Right.
It'd be, I mean, it's better for me to put it on the, on the south side of the property.
I think it's better for the city, too.
But the city won't allow any more driveways on the Lynn Avenue, because there's a two-hundred-foot site requirement, or two-hundred-and-fifty-foot site requirement.
Sir, did you have something to add to this?
Is this a future agenda?
Yeah, I was going to say, we're going with this in terms of the agenda item.
It's the same, Carl Kaczynski, nineteen fifty-six, southeast one hundred and thirteen, porch, my wife and I own the apartment. A little bit of history on this, twenty-some years ago, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-two or twenty years ago, I worked in Oregon City, I was a Quontian, another Quontian was Al Simonsen. And when we bought the apartments, there was hay on that. And I had, asked him if they would do something about mowing it. He said, "We don't have any money." So, I said, "Will you come up and cut it? If you come up and cut it, I'll maintain it." Because there's kids up and down the street, there's no, those houses up there are small and no backyards. So, I maintained it. I had, we had managers at the time, I paid to have it done, and I did it. I, sometimes I didn't have managers, so I had paid outside people to do it. Went through several lawn mowers, et cetera, et cetera. Well, a few years went by, and I realized that possibly, that could be part of my problem, my property. So, I asked Al Simonsen about having it vacated. "Carl, you'd never want to do that. Number one, they didn't mow it because they didn't have any money." But he said, "You don't want to do that, because when you vacate, it costs you money, and you and the other party, Nichols' property, was it Dean Nichols' property, is what it was at the time, it just costs you more in, in taxes. Nothing will ever be done with it. If you maintain it, you can use it." So, monetarily, we've paid to have, to, to take, take care of it, and now, somebody else, for, to, for his benefit. Now, the reason that he's changing this is, he has three lots. He wants, the city wants him to come in with the two up western lots, he's going to come through the extension of East Street, and he's going to come into the two lots that way. The far south lot, which is now divided by his driveway coming across, he can't build on there, apparently there's not enough room. So, if he vacates the driveway to the existing house, then he can put a house there. Then, he needs access to the house he has. So, he's going to come down.
Mr. Mayor, that's not our issue at all.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not our issue at all here. That's not our issue at all here. My point is, I think that that has to be argued at the different, to a different commi, commission. I'm sorry, I know that sounds harsh, but that's, that's an issue for the planning commission.
No, it's a reestablishment of a lot of records, so it doesn't go to the planning commission. We have to handle it at administrative level.
Okay.
So, what-
So, where are we on this? We're, we're hung up?
Well, I mean, the bottom line is, it's a platted city street, and it was intended to be a street, so, I mean, I went, I did a site visit with Bob Cullison, it's, it's a pretty constrained site, there's a lot of issues, but the best we can do is work with Mr. Danielson to address both their concerns and, and the city's concerns, and one of the concerns we have is allowing any more access on the Lynn, on that, on that corner with that slope, and it's just not a good idea. corner with that slope, and it's just not a good idea from a safety standpoint.
I understand that, but there, there is a park right across the street, and the concern about having one more house, because we're going to be talking about one house, to have access out, out onto Charmin, is that it's dangerous. Okay, and I agree with that, except to, to take the only, and I understand it's, it's public right-of-way, to take and say, "Well, there's a play area, let them go play across the street." There isn't any one of you that allow your kids under 15 to go across Lynn Avenue right there.
I agree, I.
Another park right around the corner.
But, but, but see, what you're talking about is kids that are older.
Let me, can I, I want to, can I? Mr. Mayor, can I jump in here?
Yes, please.
Please, okay. There, there are two issues here. One is that you have to deal with staff to come to some kind of an agreement, if you, if you, allow me to finish, sir. The other issue is that, is that, you know, you got some advice early on that may have been an error, maybe you should have, have, have vacated the property when you had the opportunity to do so, and when your neighbors did. I did it with a 13th street, that people said, "Nobody will ever build on that," but when a guy started snooping around, I said, "Well, we better vacate this deal, because nothing is ever forever." So the issue, I think, is we got to say to the, to the city manager and to the development director, "Look at this, if you can't develop a resolution, then, then if it has to come back to us in some form, fine, but we're not going to resolve it in the next 15 minutes here."
I understand, so what I'd like, if you possibly could, is look at, if it has to go that way, look at one more house coming out onto Charmin, just one. Or repositioning it, the driveway. Thank you.
Not, not that I have interest, anything can be remanded to the commission on the commission's request, can it not?
We can bring this back to you, but, I mean, standards are standards.
Yep, we understand.
I, I wouldn't recommend that you start waiving them standards, but, again, you have the ultimate authority to.
One last word.
Um, I've, I've revised my engineering twice. It's currently going through the process. I hope to have permits next week, have the road done by the end of the month. I have to have it done, because I have a, I have an obligation to deliver to the people I sold the property to.
And, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
I believe Mr. Cullison did have a conversation with, with this gentleman, and our request was that he work with them to try and address their concerns as best as he could, and I would hope that he would do that.
I've never been contacted by these people, when I talked to the city and became aware of their concerns, I contacted them. If they would have vacated the street, and we each would have had 20 feet, my best guess estimates, the difference between the 20 feet that they'd end up with, and what's going to happen, is about four and a half feet. I'm required to have a 16-foot driveway, and if you took 16 feet, added a six-foot curb, a six-inch, I mean, excuse me, a six-foot sidewalk, a six-inch curb, and the two-foot cut that's required, that's eight and a half feet, so I'm coming off the property line probably 24 feet, 24 and a half feet.
Is there any interest in the commission putting this on as an agenda item, or doing something else with it? Doug, were you suggesting?
No, I just wanted to know that we could.
I think, yeah, you know, if these, if these people, the, is it Kaczynskis? You know, if they want to make a specific request for something to be on, on the agenda, why, uh?
I, I, and I, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Lynch in that respect, however, I think the, the question becomes whether, is, is the process so far along that we would actually stop something from happening in order to hear it as an agenda item?
Sounds like it to me, I mean, based on what he says.
Well, I'm asking you, as interim development director, are you ready to approve permits for them to build this road?
We, what we've done is, we've laid out what our issues were and told them what he had to do per our city standards. And if there's any way he could cheat the road over to save some of that green space, we encourage that, and that's basically what we approved, that's the design we approved, unless I'm in error with what Mr. Cullison told me. Would that be, would that be your understanding?
So.
I just had systems engineering down at last over the design.
Okay. So what you're saying is, you've issued them a permit to build the road?
No.
But we will.
May I have one more thing to say? I will make a brief, I will make a brief. What we're saying here is that these small children who are, let me have my say, please, that these small children, you suggested that there's a park, we're talking about three, four, five, up to 12 years old. 12-year-old might be able to get on his bike and go up to a park. A little three, four, or five-year-old, we've owned these apartments for 22 years, we've never had very many old children in our apartment complex, but we do have a lot of little ones. Now, he puts this roadway down through there, these children are going to be on that driveway, and he's not talking about putting it on this side, on his property side, he's talking about putting it through the middle, through these trees, on the other side of the trees, so it'll take it right down the middle of their play area.
But that's where the roadway is, is it not, man?
Sir, I understand that, but what you're saying as adults here is that one more car, or two more cars cannot pull out onto Charmin because it's dangerous. Let me please have my say. I'm fighting for these children. Two more adults can't pull out onto Charmin Street because they don't have brains enough to look both ways to, to keep from getting hit, but a little three, four, or five-year-old is supposed to be able to make that decision and not get hit on this roadway that you're putting down through their play area. And I would say the history of 110 years of not having a roadway there, and for us maintaining it for 22 years for a play area, has got to have some weight with this group. It has to. There cannot be the, a money being made on the backs of these little children, and forever, these little children will have a place on that hill to play. It does not should be at expense of a roadway and money for a developer.
Mr. Mayor, I sympathize with the lady, as I'm sure we all do, but what, 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 what I have to go by is the law, my friends. If, if, if the rules say as such, and our, and our developmental service director has stated those rules, and it's affected this, this particular thing, he, if people are going by the rules, I, I by no means, it's no big secret that I think we have too many people coming rapidly in the city, but I still have to go by whatever rules are laying out. And, and I sympathize with you, in fact, my brother lives right across the street from you, by the way. So I, I, I don't want to see a road in there either, but the fact is, that's, that's the reality of it, that's the rules. And when, and you think that I'm going to, that I'd love to see more traffic pass my own people's property? Absolutely not, but that's the rules. He lives across an apartment house.
It's a done deal, is that right, Brian? I mean, the gentleman's going to build the road, we have no other options, that I'm saying.
I don't know of any.
Thank you very much.
Could we talk about the position of the road?
Well.
Work it out with the development director.
We can't solve it here tonight, is I guess the point.
The question is, either come down Maple Street, or I come off Lynn Avenue. I don't care, I'm just doing what the city's telling me. I got an old house, I got to provide access for it.
Sometimes we get into binds that don't have an answer, so. We are going to adjourn into an executive session under ORS.
Sorry, 192661 A, E, and H, employment, real property, and legal counsel. And, Mr. Mayor, you might want to just recess, because there may be action you want to take.
Recession, I'm sorry, recess to that, yes, we'll, while they're getting out, you go ahead, yeah. Thank you all. We're sorry we can't.
Ida, as I know all of you know, the, uh, city received the resignation of the former city manager, Charles Leeson, this past week. It was pursuant to an agreement that was negotiated with him. The agreement is now before you for ratification. It has been signed by Mr. Leeson, and, uh, signed, subject to your approval by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, move we accept the agreement?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Well, I'll make part of my speech, I made an executive session, that is, that I was cut out of the process. Charles is a friend of mine, and I make no apologies for that, but I understand that city managers come and go, and, um, I object very strenuously to the fact that I was not advised of, at any point, of any of these proceedings, and since he works for all five of the, uh, commissioners, I think that the mayor and our city attorney had an obligation to make sure I was advised and informed, and, uh, John, you didn't fulfill that obligation. You started this process without me, and frankly, I think I'd feel better if you finished it without me. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me again apologize for my role in not contacting, uh, Mr. Lynch, I want to publicly apologize to him for that, and I wanted to also add that the, the city attorney was very open with the information he sent back, and if there was a communication breakdown along the way that we may or may not understand as layman, I apologize for that, but I do want to defend the position that our city attorney has, has in this issue, and that, I do want to defend it, and I do appreciate his, uh, off, you know, his information, because he, he gave us information exactly like he should do, and he was very open, and we may not have been. Thank you.
Question? Call or roll, please.
Commissioner Alec?
Aye.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Holliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.